I would like to call to order when we go ahead and do the prayer of passage, our Father.
To our Father. Father be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Do you want to bring in, or who do first? Certificate of condition? Or do we have public comments or not?
Do we have anybody that wants to make public comment? No, sir, we do not.
No. Certificate of condition?
I have not a petition.
No.
Hold on, let me check.
Number four, public hearing for, for House Annex One, Two, and Three, update, comments and questions. Anybody have any comments or questions from the Annex? One, two, and three?
There is a sign in sheet that's going to go around, and everybody does need to sign it, that is present at this time. And each of them may make public comment. Thank you.
And the extension you're going to give at the end?
Yes, I'm going to give the extension report at the end.
Is number six, who can we come back?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sonia Perez on the Florida Forest Peanut Festival Association.
Boy, the report room just got a lot better looking.
Let me go ahead and read the item on number six. Forty-eight, on two, Floresville Peanut Festival Association. Item number eight, association, President Sonia said want us to repress.
It should be Perez.
Perez. To request formal use of the Court House lawn and parking lot for the seventieth annual peanut festival being held October the seventh to October the eleventh, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, and this is the Court, the seventieth annual Floresville Peanut Festival, Court in Nature's Magnificent Wonders. And I would like to introduce the queen elect for this year, and that is Ms. Carbajal. And she's going to introduce her court's lead card.
Um, good morning, I'm Elect. Carbajal. This is King-elect Ruth Rocha. First, I'll run Princess-elect Peyton Stroger. Prince-elect Leon Lee. Princess-elect Marina Hernandez. Prince-elect John Lowey. Princess-elect Jessica Cranston. Prince-elect Chris Albert. Princess-elect Serena Cervantes. And Prince-elect Scott Gonzalez.
Second, Commissioner Morowitz, all in favor? All right. You press your hand.
We, two thousand fourteen, Court of Nature's Magnificent Wonders. We would like to request to recognize and hope that the commission is forced to present a proclamation declaring October the seventh, two thousand fourteen, to October the eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, as the peanut festival dates in Floresville, Texas.
And if I may, Judge Proten, I would like to read the proclamation into the record.
Okay.
Whereas the city of Floresville, Texas is celebrating its seventieth annual peanut festival to be held October the seventh through October the eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. Whereas the state of Texas harvests the second largest crop of peanuts in the nation. Of the peanut festival is knowledge of the historical and commercial importance of the peanut festival industry to our region. Whereas the peanut festival is a grand celebration that only recognizes the importance of the peanut to southwest Texas agriculture, but also raises money for scholarships. Whereas the citizens of Wilson County invited to enjoy this unique celebration and attend the main events, including the Floresville Peanut Festival parade held at ten a.m. on Saturday, October the eleventh, and the big street dance held that evening. And whereas Saturday activities also include a peanut growth contest sponsored by the Lions Club, arts and crafts display, various musical entertainment, food booths, Walter Tournament carnival, and fun activities for the whole family. Now, their party is ordered by this commission of court of the county of Wilson that it recognizes central claims, October the seventh through October the eleventh, to be peanut festival days. And we call upon the people of Wilson County to participate and enjoy these festivities. Witness our marks and see it.
Commissioner Mulcham?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Whitey, second. Commissioner Morowitz, all in favor?
All right.
Are we going to have the queen white in the middle? I'm sorry, I. We have to get in front of you. Sure, maybe she'll be over here. The queen. Can you, all right. Will you all like to go?
Thank you very much.
We'll need one for the judge, one to hit to there. Okay, let me be on the other side, that way somebody can be on the other side. Okay. I'm going to let him, let him guess.
I'm going to say three, y'all nervous well, so it's nice and pretty. Then it's home to mama. All right, here we go, one, two, three. That's one, that's two, that's three.
Okay, I'll move, because we've got two cameras here. Oh, I'm sorry, that's okay. This is so. That's all right. Okay, here we go, one, two, three. Another bed. We have two cameras. Okay, here we go, one, two, three. Got it.
Mr. Around, yes, we charge a dollar fifty.
Sometimes. We don't need that, so all right. Right, we see him around. There you go.
Thank you guys.
Couldn't quite reach that.
I remember that one, acknowledgement of the former of Christie Lambos as Assistant County Attorney of Brooklyn, telling.
Auditor.
Auditor.
Not everyone I talk to.
I have an order setting the appointment and the compensation for both assistant county auditors on June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen. A public hearing was held in the Justice Center Report Room in Wilson County, Texas pursuant to local government code for the purpose of appointing and setting the compensation of Wilson County auditor's assistants. It is ordered that First Assistant Kristen Love is appointed, and her present salary is continued with any increase approved by Wilson County Commissioners Court for all Wilson County employees. It is ordered that Second Assistant Auditor Lisa Everhart is appointed, and her present salary is continued with an increase approved by Wilson County Commissioners Court for all Wilson County employees. Such salary increases shall be effective date as the commission court approves the other Wilson County employees, signed by Judge Jana Reyes, page first, judicial district, and Stella Sachs, ten to eighteen, judicial district.
If I could, please keep on both of those together.
Seven and eight?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Mulcham? Commissioner Baum, second. Commissioner Whitey, all in favor? All right. Item number nine, discuss and take action on enforcement of Bill Mays as Commissioner E S D number one.
Commissioner, Judge, I don't know. Bill Mays is going to be filling in for one of, for the seat as a commissioner on E S D number one.
Balance of the term.
Yeah, so y'all take a look at him in case he makes a mistake, and I'll know.
Commissioner Mulcham?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Morowitz, second. Commissioner Whitey, all in favor? All right.
If you raise your right hand. Do you, Bill Mays, fully swear affirm that you have not directed or indirectly paid or offered promise to pay or contribute, or promised to contribute any money, thing, or value or promise in public office or employment as a reward to secure your appointment confirmation as Commissioner E S D number one? Do you, Bill Mays, fully swear that you will pay the debt that you used to Commissioner E S D along with Texas?
The curbing.
Yes, sir.
You got a reflection, they sent me a text message Thursday, asking if I heard where she has emailed someone just to say that she's going to resign.
Thank you very much.
The item number ten, discuss and take action on dating and position for a new maintenance employee.
Thank you, brother.
I believe Don put it on there. I'm not sure if they're going to even hire anyone this year, or they just wanted to have a position available. There are funds available for the rest of the year, and we're going to put in an extra budget to put the court out, the area, all that. Just Frank is going to need at least some more people.
Some more people, so if we have someone, we have the money to cover it for the rest of the year. And what is this person mainly going to do? Is it going to be yard work, maintenance work? I consider that two different positions, right, myself.
I understand it is the same as what Frank is doing right now.
I was giving.
I do know with what we're doing over here, that we're going to need an additional person.
Correct.
There's no question about that. But I don't want him to be doing yard and making, and maintenance. You know, one is one, one is another, you know?
Right, so y'all have to determine what you want this person to do.
Take action on creating a position for a new maintenance. So the issue is a new maintenance person. And so I think that if we're going to discuss, my suggestion is that we approve the new maintenance position, and if we'd like, we can put on the next agenda to discuss what the responsibilities are of a maintenance person. And I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, Commissioner Whitey, Second, Commissioner Morowitz, all in favor?
All right.
Because I'm listening, we need to know what they want to be doing.
Item number nine, Commissioner, Mary White, using position four, comping and chip spreader, and emulsion, folks.
I think that maybe eleven sixteen go together, I don't know. At the last meeting, if you all, if you recall, we talked about the purchase of a bucket spreader from Romco, and also a asphalt distribution equipment. And we decided to wait, and Commissioner File and I met with the representative from Cooper and talked to him about their equipment. And I'll speak for myself in that I think the equipment that they have to offer will more than meet our needs. And it is about sixty-five thousand dollars cheaper than the one that Romco has. The advantage with Cooper is that this is all Cooper does. And so from the standpoint of having prime mechanics on hand and having parts available, although I like Romco, they're probably going to do a better job. The issue that we have is that the one that Romco has, or I'm assuming it's still available, is immediate, and here, and we could have it now. But again, it's sixty-five thousand dollars more expensive, almost seventy, sixty-eight. The one from Cooper is not going to be available until late in the fall. To fill that void, I met with a gentleman that has been in the construction business with doing work for TechStop in the past, a gentleman by the name of Joe Cotter, who is now out of the business, and he has a chip spreader. It's not a new chip spreader, it is a little nearer than the one that we have, but everything on it functions, according to him, and he's really good with maintenance. And so I talked to him about the potential, first of all, of buying it, because it would meet our minimal needs, would be a whole lot less. But he's not interested in selling it at this moment. And I asked him about if we could lease it for a period of time. And he's not interested in leasing yet, but he said, Larry, if the county wants to use it, the county can just come and get it. So for the chip sealing needs that we have for the season, we should be able to fill those with Mr. Cotter. There's only one caveat, and that is that he has leased his old yard to a company, and they're going to do fifteen miles of road sometime, he thinks, in August, if they bid on it. And so there may be a portion of August that is not available, but past that, it's available instead that we could use it. So my recommendation is that we do the one from Cooper. I think since it's not due until fall, that we can't get it until fall, then we could put it in the next budget, which would be a little better than just pulling it out now. The emulsion truck, I don't have, when we met with him, the emulsion equipment that Romco had recommended, Romco had that had been recommended, was ninety-nine thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. And the equipment that Commissioner File and I talked to, the representative, Mr. Houston, from Cooper, was eighty-two thousand dollars. Now, both of these do not include a truck. And the thought was that we would get a used truck, and that we would put the equipment on that. I understand now that that may be a problem. When I talked to Mr. Houston last week about having a real number for today, his father had just passed away, and so I told him that not to worry about it, it wasn't that critical for today. So we still have to get, if we have to get a new truck to go with it, then that's going to probably be sixty-five thousand dollars on top of the eighty-two. So if the court will allow at the next meeting, I'll bring numbers associated with that. And you could curb all that.
No, that's right, I said some are used trucks. We can't get a used truck to meet the need for the tank, to hold the tank. And the salesman told me probably going to have to go to a new truck that was special made. It's the length of the frame that makes it the difference. And I agree, Cooper also has a, the salesman said they didn't have a training session with a guy to help train, help work with us, which I think is what we're going to need.
Well, the advantage of Cooper is that every year, they offer classes for the chip sealer, they offer classes for the emulsion truck. And we all know that we'll have a term personnel. And when you have a two-day class, because this new emulsion truck, you know, the one we have is fairly sophisticated, and this will be more so, it's all computerized. And so you can't just jump in there and start flipping switches. So they look like the people, and between the two, now, we still have a truck. The fact of the matter is, is that when you look at the difference in cost between the chip spreader and the emulsion truck, the emulsion equipment, we're going to save enough money there, about seventy-five thousand dollars, to more than pay for the truck compared to the business we have with Romco. And if we have to take that route, then that's the route, in my opinion, to take.
We'll put in next commission of court.
Yes, sir.
We'll put in number sixteen.
Because y'all have good numbers.
Sixteen, nineteen, all right.
And I'll verify in the interim if they're going to require, what they're going to require as far as a deposit or whatever, because I think if we go forward on this, that we need to go ahead and get it booked.
Right.
Is there anything we need to do with Mr. Cotter to be able to do? He told me the only thing was that when he parked it, he took the battery out. And that, I told him we'd get a battery. It has one tire that's low, but he said that it leaked air, and that he thought that we went over there and aired it up, that everything would be fine. And he said that he had just serviced everything before he parked it. We thought that we'd take a look at it and just make certain that everything looked good. And if it needed to be serviced, that we'd do it.
Can we afford a battery?
I hope so, because I'm going to use your name when I get it.
Item number twelve, discuss and take action on closing the FEMA fireback account due to not having any more funds coming in.
Doesn't account for government for the last three years, and we checked if we had to add one, and it just, those were reimbursements to the county that shouldn't have closed out years ago. Because of it being a separate account, we have to get it recorded. It's by seven thousand dollars, and it just goes back to regular revenue, back to the general fund.
Make a motion. Commissioner Morowitz, second. Commissioner Baum, all in favor? All right. Item thirteen, discuss and take action on guarding a use, Lieutenant Tony O'Reilly's open enrollment for county employees benefit options.
If you'll recall, these folks came to court a while back.
Right.
Matter of fact, thirteen and fourteen both came to court. The Methodist group came first, and then the Airlife people came. Airlife is, to a degree, the preferred group from the sheriff's department, typically they just call for Airlife as well, and.
That's more of just a term that everybody uses, that it's a helicopter, but what they want. I know here recently, Todd Gill has used Methodist.
Right.
Yeah, because they're in Seguin.
Yeah.
LaGuardia has used Methodist.
Yeah. Methodist keeps a helicopter at Guadalupe Regional Medical Center in Seguin. So Airlife is your people's courtesy, so I don't know.
Yeah, we use any of them. In fact, there's been, there was an accident a couple of weeks ago, fourth of July weekend, maybe, I don't remember, where we couldn't get anybody to fly. And we called, we tried to get them to call all of them, because it was much needed.
Yeah, it was much needed.
Well, it was kind of bumpy, too.
So the fact of the matter is, is that Airlife came and made a presentation, and the presentation said that they would provide their service to the county free if we would accept it. And if we accepted it, then they would make it available to the general population of Wilson County at a really preferred price, I can't remember what it was.
Ten dollars.
Like ten dollars a year. And so when we left that day, what we did is we asked that Tom talk with them and see if we could get coverage to take effect now, so we could get coverage and then go forward into October. And you got that.
Yes, it happened. They sent a contract, and we looked at it, and they made the changes we asked for.
So since it's free, and we can't talk them down on that, I'd make a motion that.
Do you have the contract? No. I need the contract. Because it's an employee benefit, so whoever has the contract, and I don't know whether he has it.
Do we have to have a contract here to approve going forward?
You could put contingent on locating. Maybe Jane could locate the contract, if you don't, maybe have them send it again. Okay, no, because we've made changes. Okay, I think you should have a copy.
But there's a copy of both.
I have a copy, well, I said to Tom, the last time I said, said to you.
Has he made changes? No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
So we have a contract, we just don't have yours.
We put this on, Jane gets it, okay. Well, then Tom can retrieve the contract. Okay. And then you can pay the owner.
I've tried to hear him approve, but. Yes, that's right.
Just somebody has to give me a copy of that customer.
Need a motion to set the R and V to sign, turn on lights. I'll make it. Commissioner Whitey, second. Commissioner Morowitz, all in favor? All right. And number fourteen.
Methodist, this is on here just simply because Methodist, and I gave you theirs, I don't think she's seen it yet, Methodist just wants to be a part of the menu. I mean, they understand that Airlife is giving it to us, and they can't do that. But they also understand, as the sheriff pointed out, that Airlife doesn't cover everything.
Right.
And so they want to be a part of our insurance menu, just like Hat Life. So that whenever we get into the new year, and we're there, and everyone's looking, you know, everyone has, all of our employees have to come over and look at their insurance, and everything's available, that Methodist will be there as an add-on that would be a payroll deduction if our employees are interested, and only if they're interested.
And it's.
And through that, at least, it tell, it would communicate, because what's going to happen is people are going to assume that if a helicopter shows up, that they'll never have a bill. And that's not the case. If you have these two, you're pretty well covered, I mean, there's other ones around. But these are the two major ones, is that correct?
Yeah, Airlife does the majority of it, but Methodist, Aircare and its air med care, they are called in from time to time. Can I add something to what you've been saying? As long as, as long as all the employees understand this isn't a menu order up, in other words, I want Airlife to come get me, it's whoever is available.
No, I understand, well, the menu. Well, the, the menu is that if, if, if they look at that and they go, yes, check it, that they wanna pay, I forget what it...
Five or six a month.
Five dollars a month out of their check, then Methodist or Air Life, if they're the ones that come, they'll be covered either one hundred percent.
Right.
I have been sending in applications and they've been accepting, accepting them by my family, friends, everybody that I know for ten dollars a year. But you have to have Wilson County on the application. And everybody's been getting the card and everything. Now, that's ten dollars a year. And I'm hearing you say five dollars a month.
Well, the other groups, the, the first group is Air Life. And since the county agreed to deal with Air Life, they made it available to everyone in the county for ten dollars a year.
I thought in the original presentation, it was ten dollars a month for the hundred and fifty-five people that you have at the county. And you say that that's, that's fifteen hundred dollars. And now you're saying it's free for the county?
It's free. The, the deal they made was that if the county would, would deal with them, then they would make it available to citizens.
For ten dollars.
For ten dollars.
A family.
A family, yes.
Not a person, it's family.
It's the family, that's right.
And I've got, I've, I've been enrolling and calling them and talking to them and they're all in favor. I don't know how many people actually enrolled, but I know that I've enrolled all of my family and friends.
Now, now, the, the other group, the Medicare group is the second group. And the point we were making is that if, if you were unfortunately in an accident and it requires a helicopter, then Air Life is more likely to be the one that comes. But you can't specify if, and it might be Med Care come.
And what's the cost for that?
Well, it's, well, the, that's something you have to deal with them directly. So all we're talking about is coverage for our employees. So the one is free, so everyone's gonna get it. That's the Air Life, the one you're paying ten dollars a year for. Med Care is not free to our employees and so it's available through a payroll deduction. So if they wanna be covered with the two major ones, then that's what they do.
Are you gonna have someone or how can we get in touch with? Because Air Life was forty-nine dollars a year. But if this is five dollars a month, that's sixty dollars a year. That, that, that price should be negotiated. Because it was forty-nine dollars.
Yeah, it's, well, they're, they're a different group. And, and that, that's what they charge is sixty dollars a year.
Good, thank you.
And when are these, the start or close?
In the fall.
In the fall, okay.
In October.
Whenever we do.
October, November. We sit down and have our employee meeting. Then we want them, they want to be a part of that menu.
So the fourteen, item number fourteen, I should have a motion that allows them to speak after open enrollment is basically, is open. Can I have one?
Motion, Commissioner Whitey, second. Commissioner Filet, all in favor?
Aye.
She brought in the name.
It's just acknowledging that we're...
Item fifteen, Tom Doop Nick.
He's destroying the name.
Tom Doordruck. This doesn't approve nine items transferred.
Okay. Within Commissioner's Court, we won't have enough monies available to cover these three items. And I'm gonna, we talked, there're gonna be line item transfers. The first line item transfer, courthouse security. We're gonna be under budget by about forty grand because the money we bring in between district and county doesn't cover the one bailiff right now that's assigned to that department. The district judges require two bailiffs to understand. And so we're gonna, I'm requesting forty thousand to be moved out of...
To cover that.
Yes, to cover that. And then the next line item is our E and O insurance, which errors and emissions that policy has gone up substantially in the last couple of years. So what we bring in also on fees doesn't cover the policy. So we're gonna be short like five thousand dollars to cover that expense that we already paid out. And I've already addressed it in extra quite before, we won't have that issue. Third item is, last year, I understand, the Hot Check Fund was consolidated, I believe at the beginning of January thirteenth. Well, there was a deficit balance in that account at end of the year. It should have been funded last fiscal year, it wasn't. County Attorney's Office did have enough money where they were under budget that it would have covered that, but I mean, we need to close that account now since it's no longer an active account. So within the line item transfer, we have enough money to do that. So that's why I'm requesting for, for these three items.
Two, three.
I'm sorry, it's ten thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
So you discuss this with the county attorney on the Hot Checks?
Yeah, to zero out the account. Right, because we're not using that account anymore, but it's got a deficit balance.
Need a motion? Commissioner Morales, second. Commissioner Filet, all in favor?
Aye.
Item seventeen. This doesn't take action on adding funds management group as a custodial for the F I C A cash management program for additional investment options.
I put that on, but the gentleman was supposed to come this morning to address the court about this program. So I'd like to table it until he can come. Thank you.
Item eighteen, the Ambushet E M C. Item one, this doesn't take action on recommendation of the Wilson County Development Development Committee to appoint Alton Dickson to build a public member at large vacancy on the W C D O R C.
Yeah, the Development Committee lost one of its members when we lost Mr. Gerhart. Big shoes to fill. Alton is, was a retired employee of Phelps. And he has, is very familiar with our D N C. Came to our meetings for years and fully retired. And he voiced an interest about getting involved with the committee again. And we recommend that Mr. Alton, he can be, take the place of Mr. Gerhart.
Need a motion? Commissioner Bob, second. Commissioner Whitey, all in favor?
Aye.
They're not gonna swear at you, Mr. Alton. You gotta, you wanna say something?
Yeah.
You got some big shoes to fill, but little body. Yeah, little, big shoes. Little feet, big shoes.
Item number two of eighteen, uh, activity permits. Item eight, permit number five hundred, SS water, prison four, warning, glory lane, review and approve. Commissioner Whitey, make a motion. Second, Commissioner Morales, all in favor?
Aye.
Half percent. They're gonna probably have to change it. That's what they did last time.
I can do it, just put just a line through and...
Line item here. And put Judge Proten.
Item number... Item number three, five nine crossing permits.
Take A and B.
A and B together.
Yeah, it's the same, same type gun.
Permit number two, there were A, D C P, South Central Texas, L L C. Precinct number two, County Code Two Oh Four, North Crossing, Review and Approve. And B, permit number zero eight nine, D C P, South Central Texas, L L C. Precinct number two, County Code Two Oh Four, South Crossing, Review and Approve. Motion, Commissioner Filet, second. Commissioner Morales, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, non-standard pipelines, eight, F N seven seventy-five, four, five, seven, seven. Precinct number three, Shana.
Shana.
Discuss and take action.
Well, Shana's earned almost a little more than thirteen acres off of seven seventy-five. And they wish to sell ten and a half with the house. They also own lots ninety-four and ninety-five of Country Road subdivision right next to it. Since it's on seven seventy-five, there was no discussion with textile about driveway access. One driveway's gonna go with the current house. The other one, they're gonna be limited to one driveway per. They're two point six acres plus lots ninety-four and ninety-five. They agreed to follow textile regulations, so they meet all their requirements.
We have a quick, quick...
Quick, need a motion? Commissioner Morales, second. Commissioner Whitey, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll do the next one. Item D, Deer Trail, eighteen pro, precinct number two, get, gather.
Capier.
Discuss and take action.
Um, Ms. Capier owns lots nine and ten B in Mountain subdivision. She wants to sell a portion of lot nine and all of ten B for the land on...
Morales, all in.
All the road frontage requirements have been met and are capable to be furnished out of here.
Need a motion? Commissioner Filet, second. Commissioner Whitey, all in favor?
Aye.
Item number five, amendment of infrastructure development plan. Pecan Springs RV Park, discussing take action.
Back in March, this is Pecan Springs RV Park, around Sutherland Springs Road over here, partly in the city, partly in the county. They opened up in March with their city compliance from the county for forty-six RV sites and eight cabins. Right now, they wanna change the eight cabin slots to RV slots. It's all the same setback requirement, same sizes. He's met all of his city permitting requirements for electrician utilities. And the Development R D Committee has given them favorable recommendation. I have I D, the copies of I D P plans, you all in with them?
I'll go ahead and do a walk.
Okay.
Need a motion? Commissioner Filet, second. Commissioner Whitey, all in favor?
Aye.
Number six, Wilson County Transportation Infrastructure Fund project. A pool of comments we see, discussing take action on how to proceed.
Is that something relevant to this?
I don't know.
Don't have it.
Well, I know we got, finally got, Leanne got the okay Thursday evening on textile.
Yeah, the notice to comment, which is a big deal.
Yeah, exactly, I knew that. I guess one of the questions that I have is on the bidding process. I'm still kinda confused of what, if we have to bid it as a project, as a whole grant? Or is each road its own separate bidding process? And because from what the information I got from you, it kinda looks, we have to bid the whole grant. That's what, no? That, that doesn't make sense.
No, you bid...
Project.
The project, uh, just like you do on any other project. I mean, it's, it's, you're purchasing goods or services, goods in this case. And what you're asking to purchase is what to bid for.
So we, even though we don't use a contract, we, whatever, we have to bid everything is what I'm asking, too?
Unless it falls under one of the exceptions.
What we ought to do is have a meeting and sit down with, uh...
Well, we, you know... And I've sent, you know, a lot of them to Dr. Reen, yes, but it's a two-page detailed discussion on the reasons for the bidding, the reasons it needs to be bid. Uh, if you had unique vendors that you were gonna buy one thing from and it was twenty thousand dollars, that's under the fifty thousand, you wouldn't have to bid that. But if you're gonna be bidding, buying things from one company, ten, ten different orders from one company and they add up to over fifty thousand, that, they all have to be bid regardless of when you buy.
On an individual project?
Right.
So you could have forty thousand on one project, thirty-five on another project, and you'd be okay?
Well, I'm not gonna say absolutely yes. Because it, it always comes down to the, um, to the intent, so...
Sounds like I'm, you know, we probably need to try to cover something this week when Leanne gets back. She was just here today, I don't know.
Yeah, sure.
Item nineteen, Ellen Baker, Delta Public Safety.
This is, hey, I had it off this page earlier this week. And, uh, we've been in discussion, we had workshop last week to discuss, to great extent, the increase in permitting. And I didn't have a clue that driveways were where they are today. But part of our topic of conversation was driveways. And talk about how many we're doing in the county and trying to get a more, even across the board, way of doing our driveways. You know, driveway's been a problem for it. The way they're built, the way they're permitted, the whole nine yards. One of the discussions that, that we had, and before we go any further, is to make sure Commissioner's Court wants us to go ahead and put the time and effort into this. If not, then we can drop it and move on to something else. But what has been suggested and talked about in the workshop was starting a, putting driveways outside of the subdivision regulations so that a way they, they are committed throughout the county. Whether it be, uh, industrial, agricultural, residential, commercial, it's all irrelevant to the rules everybody will be. I mean, residential versus the industrial will not be the same rules. But they will be enforced the same way. And we talked about an enforcement plan and, 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 you know, all of this is, is subject to, if y'all want us to move ahead or you want us to, you don't wanna make any changes to it, and we need to just drop it and move on. We just don't want to spend a lot of time on it. But we have a lot of other things to do in that committee. As you can tell by the numbers, we're looking at, uh, projected thousand driveways this year. That's on all county property, four hundred, four hundred septics and, uh, five hundred and forty-six development permits. Development permits takes in, make, is a lot about your flood plan. There's a lot to do with flood plan. And so that's just something we're asking the court to say, we don't wanna, we don't wanna mess with driveways or, yeah, we do. I, I've, I've been through most of the precincts. I haven't been through precinct one, but you don't have really a lot of new subdivisions. I've been in two, three, and four quite a bit. And it varies and we get complaints from, uh, from people all the time. Why did my neighbor have to do this? Right now, it's pretty much set up on, uh, if, if it's not done to county specs, the permissioner would have to go in there and take it out and let them do whatever they want to get over to replace it. We'd rather go, start at the beginning whenever they start building the driveway and catch them before they get to the point where it has to be plowed out or totaled out or whatever. And we just kinda just need some direction from y'all.
I'm wondering if you're sure that Fox ever came as credit, that would work?
That is, uh, I don't know where that is, that's not my number.
Excel spreadsheet came up with that number.
Yeah, that's not my number. I have, I have, uh, yeah. Don't ask me. Like I say, they're not my numbers, so I can't tell you. But if you look at last year, it shows eight hundred and six, eight hundred, uh, driveways in two thousand thirteen, so I would definitely predict it to be around a thousand.
Those numbers are wrong, because that shows, the numbers we have there are only, just a really small number, so...
Right. Yeah, I don't, that's just why I'm going off of this. I didn't come up with these numbers, these were size and a half in the computer.
And the Excel spreadsheet will, will have them, and, and I know we're not down, but there's something, something strange more on. Because we're looking at a hundred and sixty-one.
Well, even if it's only five up for all next year.
It's probably, you got October to January, it's not in, the number on there.
Yeah, ten is supposed to be putting those numbers together to get...
This is from January to July, but they got total.
But it wouldn't be five hundred, four, nine, like Larry said, a hundred and sixty-nine.
No, 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 you got October to January, it's not included on here. I think what we need to do is look at the numbers again before we go forward on this, just to figure out what we've got.
You said about the driveway permits, if you add up January through July...
It's only one sixty-nine.
Right. I don't know, what was from October to then?
It wouldn't be...
We have gone into October.
I, I don't doubt, I don't doubt that we have five seventeen, particularly since we had eight hundred and eighteen last year. All I'm saying is that the numbers that we have here don't, don't show it.
I left, I left the Excel spreadsheet to an audit of some, it may have summed everything of it instead of just...
But it's hard to believe that in comparable period, that we'd be from one, from eight eighteen to one sixty-nine.
That's what it did.
So that's what I did.
It added burn, yeah.
Yeah, totally, no.
Sorry about that.
But then if...
Well, look, look...
That would still be a lot lower than eight hundred and eighteen last year.
Well, what we need to do is, we need to look at this with the real numbers in order, because I...